Sorry about my confusion, you know, it's older people kind of lose control, you know.
Geez, I don't know, I'm not there yet.
Generation. Anyway, sorry. But it was. Big thirty, um. So I will open the meeting. Do we need roll call? I'm not sure who's on tonight, Jeff?
Jeff. Jeff is on.
Jeff, can we have? Sorry, let me unmute myself. Okay, Mayor Morandi.
Here.
Trustee Early.
Yes.
Trustee Foley.
Here.
Trustee Murphy.
Here.
And trustee Woods.
Here.
Phillips Woods.
Also here.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I have to shoot down to get to the agenda for tonight. Marie, could you start the with the public hearing portion of this to like?
Sure. So. Fran, so. I make a motion to enter into a public hearing for the franchise agreement with Cable Vision of Wapinsus Falls.
I'll stick to the motion.
Thank you, Fran, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Fran, do you want to give us the highlights of the franchise agreement?
I will probably stumble, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass some of this off to Jeff, but basically. This is a renewal of a franchise agreement that we've had with Cable Vision or with Alti's, who used to be Cable Vision. And the original agreement was done, the last agreement was done in 2009, I believe, it's usually about a 10 year, but it spreads over a little bit longer. The highlights of it is, is there's a number of things. The village gets. For the, for the. Because we allow Walties to deal in the village, they pay us a franchise fee, which is a percentage of the gross. Income they get from village residents, and I believe it's paid quarterly, is that correct, Michelle? Yes, okay, it's paid to the village quarterly. In addition. Altis gives the village buildings as well as the schools in the village and library in the village. Free. Cable service for, I believe, one of the buildings in one, one school building and one library building. Other than that, this is, I believe, a new tenure agreement. And we've posted this, so we have a red line version up online. And at this point, Jeff, what am I, what am I missing? I know it's sort of a lot of pages that doesn't say, doesn't say, it's a lot of legal stuff.
And John could correct me, but basically 99% is controlled by the New York, New York State Public Service Commission. So what's in there has to be in there. Different from the agreement this year is that Altis has given us a technology grant, which we have not had in the past, in the past. And that was, I believe, $3,500. In addition, they have upgraded the speed of the internet in Village Hall. From. Basically went from eight track to CD player, so we're grateful for that and, and I've noticed the difference immediately. I think those are the main differences and John is on here from Altis and he could address these also. If, in case I missed anything.
No, I think. Sorry, go ahead.
I'm just gonna jump in with one more thing. The agreement that we have with Altis in no way prevents any other company from coming in and dealing in the village. The agreement basically says if another company wishes to offer services in the village, they have to give us an agreement. Similar to what Altis is giving us, if they give us less, then Altis has the right to lower what they're giving us in terms of the contract we currently have. So it's not a case that, well, we have Altis and we can't get Verizon or Fios or anything else. Anybody's welcome to come in, they just have to match the franchise agreement that we have with Altis, I think that's correct, is that right, John?
That's right, you have it right. So you had, I was just about to say it's a non-exclusive agreement, so you just covered that. Everything else is exactly how you positioned it, we, we, once we, and if we get to a board of vote, then. The PSC, we had then give the documents to the PSC, they review it, they bless it, as Jeff said, this is something they have oversight on, a lot of the. Legalese are based on federal and state law, mainly guarded by the FCC and also the Public Service Commission. So all the other elements you mentioned are exactly right.
Dave, do you want to leave the public hearing open until later in the meeting?
I don't know, is there anyone on now? It's one of those things, I'm not sure how many people will be interested in, I guess we can, we usually keep it open, so. We'll keep it open for a bit and continue on with our meeting.
Is there anyone?
Anyone else on the board have questions for John or Jeff about this agreement?
No.
Okay, so we will move ahead, we'll have to skip over number four. Now, since this is going on, financial update, Michelle, like.
Hello. It's the first week of the new fiscal year, there's not much going on. So the old fiscal year ended on May 31st, but the same thing, it's only been a week. At the year end, there's a lot of bills that still come in for the next few weeks, there's adjusting entries that need to be done. There's, it wouldn't be fair to present financials because they, they change every day for the next couple of weeks, so I can have a draft financial of the May 31st. You know, for next month's monthly meeting. And then at that time, I'll also be filing them with the state, which it has to be done by July 31st. And then the auditors come in and they audit and then they make a few minor changes and then we send that back up to the state. I haven't scheduled the auditors yet, but it's usually late summer, early fall that they come in for three days. And then they do their presentation sometime, you know, before the end of the year. Does anybody have any questions about last year's fiscal year or the start of new fiscal year, how any of it works or anything like that? Okay, so then the only other thing that, you know, to really mention, the tax bills, they all went out, they started to come in. Tax rate as we planned did not change essentially by, changed by point oh oh three. So less than a penny and it actually decreased. So I've, as I've heard, somebody's tax bill went down 16 cents, which I call that flat, and that's where we wanted to be. Even with, you know, a little bit of the increase we made it with the changes in tax assessments, it stayed flat. So right where we want to be. And we'll see how everything comes in through June 30th without penalty, but usually we collect it a good 90 to 95% of the taxes, you know, in June. And then. The, I guess the PTO, which is in the handbook, that's all been taken care of with all the full-time employees, they've decided if they want to. You know, defer some time cash out and that was all taken care of with the payroll that was processed yesterday. So really not much going on. Kathleen and Larry did bring up, which it's not on my report earlier today, a grant maybe for the police department. So that's just something that, you know, we have to look into and I'll work with Kathleen and Larry on that. But it looks like, you know, it's from the federal government and then there might be a smaller. Section of that grant specifically for smaller agencies, so we'll look into that as well when that gets released later in June.
Great. Anything for Michelle?
Nice, nice work, Michelle.
Thank you, Michelle.
As always, thank you, Michelle. Let's see, we have a police report, I saw Larry on before, how are you doing, Larry?
I'm good, good evening, everybody, hopefully I'm off mute, correct?
You're off.
You're good.
Okay. For the month of May 2021, we had 47 calls for service for a total number for the year, 275. We had no persons arrested, we had two for the year. For the moving violations, we had 13 moving violations. We had 53 parking summonses issued, that gave us a total of 66 for the month and for the year, 231. Nico, our parking enforcement. Person started two weeks ago, he was off for Memorial Day due to the weather. So I would expect the summonses to go up as the weekends get busier and busier and as long as the weather stays sunny and nice. Other than that, I had a few couple of things I just wanted to touch on. First of all, I was gonna bring up, Michelle already brought it up, possible grant monies going in the future for body cameras for the officers, I know that was heavy. Not heavy, but it was one of the top things on the survey that came back, but I was looking to try to do that anyway, because most of the police departments are going towards body cam- cameras. You know, in the next, probably next year or so, I know the state is looking to have all of us do that, it wasn't in the police policy, but it was a suggestion. There was. One thing I do want to bring up, I've noticed, talking to other municipalities, the auto thefts and burglaries have inched up in Duchess County. And also in Westchester, Westchester County. It was something that kind of hits and waves with, with the area. They come in, if you leave your car open and you have your car keys in the car, they're taking your car, if you leave the front door open, they're walking in your front door. So my advice to everybody in the village, I know we like to be friendly and open, make sure your doors are locked, if you have alarms. As ADT or the Ring doorbell or whatever, make sure they're working and they're functioning correctly. I'd like to get ahead of it before anything happens to us. Again, it seems to go on a wave, they come in on like a late night, one night, they'll hit whatever they can hit and see whatever doors are open to get what they can get. So far, from my understanding, it's not been anything, any violence, it's more just a car door being opened and taking anything that's in there. We are still working and moving along with the Lexipol, with Officer D'Amato from PBA, myself and trustee Foley. And that's seems to be, you know, we're hitting as many chapters as we can, a couple of them are a little sticky with, you know, longer chapters than shorter ones. So we'll be getting those out to you as soon as we can. And another program that I don't, I didn't, I haven't talked about in the past, because it was in the beginning stages. Mike Piazza, who runs the health. The health for the county, mental health, has started, trying to start a program up for all of Putnam County. So officers will have another tool when we respond to mental health issues, not just calls for assistance in, you know. Car break-in or, you know, dog barking or whatever. It's more of a health, health issue that we've been dealing with, they're all over the county and all over the state and actually the country, the mental health calls have been. Have been skyrocketing, probably due to many, many things, COVID being one of them, being locked up in your house for god knows how long, people that are self-medicating. And you've seen it, it's been all over the news when you show up. So anyway, Mike Piazza is working on that with all of the police departments in the county, he has gone on a couple of Zoom meetings with other municipalities and. And health, mental health programs, so what we're trying to do is get some monies together to have something. Down in Lower Westchester, they actually have a mental health person that drives around with some of the officers on the weekends when it gets very, and there's a heavy, heavy load of calls, some mental health issues. What we're trying to do is maybe carry a laptop or, or in another sense, maybe give it to like the PIVAC. So if they get called to the scene, we're gonna get called to the scene, if they deem it a mental health issue, you might be able to get a professional on a laptop, on a laptop. Or the iPad, so something they can talk to somebody instead of a police officer, because it seems that when we show up, it kind of, some people get a little more agitated than others. So we're working on that, that's, that's gonna, that's probably a work in progress, don't know how long that's gonna, that's gonna take. But I just wanted to let the people know we're on the meeting, that this is the stuff that goes on behind the scenes that I don't speak about often, because I want to wait till I get something solid on it. And that's really all about have, I'm probably gonna request from the village board. And the mayor to look at two new hires coming up in the next two weeks, we are, we are still short, I mean, still down. A lot of guys going on vacation in July and August, so we'll, we'll be struggling, not struggling, we'll, we'll get, we'll get the schedule filled. But it's just getting a little more harder with less officers, right now we have 10. I know about a year, a year and a half ago, we were up to almost 15. That's it for me.
Thanks, Larry. The, the work of Officer Piazza's done, sounds, sounds like a good, a good deal, hopefully that goes, works. Sounds like something needed. Okay, anything from the board, Larry?
Nope, no good, thank you.
Okay, next up is Rec Commission.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
Yeah, good, hope everybody's doing well. I just saw a couple of typos on my report, so you'll have to excuse me. First, I've listed the approved events, except the Boy Scout ceremony, this Sunday is actually from 2 to 5 at Mayor's Park, not whatever name I put down there. We have a new application for use of the bandstand for wedding. That needs to be approved. We seem to get a lot of requests, I got another one the other day. But I don't think that one's gonna go forward. The bandstand repair and painting has been completed, thanks to the sheriff's. Department and the highway department doing the prep work, so that looks really nice. It's nice to have it looking so nice. We're still working on the flagpole, but I'm gonna keep it on there for a while and hopefully the county will be able to assist us with that. The willow trees at Mayor's Park, two of them have been trimmed, they look really nice, I hope that's gonna do two things. One, make it look nicer, and the other one is mitigate all of the falling branches that happen and then cause a real problem when it's time for mowing. The commission member, Trevor. Trevor has been working with the Phillips Town Recreation Commission about a softball tournament. We're work, we're going forward, talking with them about a fun softball tournament, the first, the second two weekends in September at Mayor's Park. I think this is hopefully to pique people's interest and maybe next summer have an adult softball league again. With the two groups. A new commission member, I think it's further on the agenda, I was hoping we might be able to move it up. Jeff Amato Jr. has expressed an interest in the Recreation Commission and we feel he'd be a great addition to the group. So I know that comes later, but I don't know if we can move it up, so I don't have to stay on the whole time.
Oh, come on.
Oh, come on. If I want to do that, I'd run for trustee, and that's not gonna happen. So pending events. We still have the. The Food and Wine Festival that was on the last agenda and I have not heard yet from. The coordinators, Frau is doing the site walkthrough, but I know she has other things to get back to you about the parking, the transportation and the COVID plans. So. That's pretty much everything that we've done, I mean.
Okay. Thing, I think, you know, we can give a shout out to, I did our last meeting to Michelle Patterson from the Highlands. I believe Highlands Garden Club, is that right, that does the work around the. Is it the Colespring or Highlands Garden Club, they do the flowers and?
Well, yeah, they, they did around the bandstand.
Right.
I did the flowers in the buckets.
Right.
And Michelle convinced my husband to go down there and water the plants, so now we have an extended member of the. Flower group who goes down and waters them.
And it, it is the Highlands, it is the Highlands Garden Club.
Yep.
They do a really nice job, especially Michelle puts a ton of energy into it.
She does, yeah.
While you're mentioning everything, it looks great, you should definitely include that in it, because they do a nice job and it really does.
They do.
Yeah. Thank you also, and you're.
Yeah. We also.
Go ahead. I was gonna move, if you have something else, and then I'll move up the appointment of Jeff Amato Jr.
That's it, I just, everybody's, it's nice, everybody's working together, you know, the highway department, the flower, the, you know, the garden group. The tree committee, you know. With everybody working together, it makes everything look better. You know, so. The tot park looks good, so.
Okay, unless someone has objections, I would like to move number 14 up to now for the approval of Jeff Amato Jr. to the Rec Commission. With that?
Yeah, yep, yes.
So on the recommendation of the Rec Commission, I will make a motion to approve Jeff Amato Jr. as a new member of the Rec Commission. Any further discussion? All in favor? Go ahead.
But you finished.
Oh, go ahead.
Now I need to talk about our meeting dates after you.
Okay. Okay, back to Jeff Amato, we have a second, all in favor? Okay, welcome, Jeff, thank you for your.
Welcome, yes.
Now, the issue we now have is that we have two members of the commission that are on the fire department. And we meet on Tuesdays, and that's also a day of the week that the fire department meets. So at our next meeting, we're gonna look at the schedule and see if we should move our meeting to another day. Because it's hard to be two places at the same time.
Yes, it is.
I know all the trustees do that all the time, but the rest of us, we just can't.
You know, and not well.
Well.
Thank you.
When you're ready, come to the board with your change of dates and we'll, we'll take care of it.
Great. Okay.
Thank you, Ben.
Enjoy the rest of your evening.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Planning Board. Matt on?
Yeah, I'm here, but the planning board has no business in front of us right now.
Okay. Then we go to zoning board. Is Eric there?
Yeah, yes.
Yes, hi, everybody.
Eric.
I'm doing well.
Good.
We had two meetings in May, May 6th. We had a public hearing about 17 Parsonage Street. This was a request for two area variances allowing in addition to the front of a house. Two neighbors spoke in support while one written comment was opposed. The hearing was held open until the next meeting, pending the submission of more information from the applicants and site visits by board members. The next meeting was May 20th and we continued the hearing on 17 Parsonage. We received another public comment in favor of the application. The board closed the hearing and voted to re, to grant the requested variances, although the members felt that the decision was a tough one. And then we had held a workshop for 12 Benedict Road, an application for an area variance to allow an addition that would slightly encroach on the front yard setback. We scheduled a public hearing on this application for the following meeting. And that, that was it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
You're welcome.
Next, we have the town of Phillips Town, it's not in your packet, but Bobby sent last minute, so Bob, are you there?
He's trying to connect, he should be with us momentarily.
Okay. Okay, well, he's on. Do you want to go to HDRB? We have a, someone from HDRB on with us tonight.
It does not look like it.
Okay, I will read it then, the monthly report, the village board from the historic district review, submitted by Sean Conway. In May, current applications in May, we met two times, we approved an application for a new windows and entry door on 11 Parrot Street, we approved a new shop sign at 109 Main Street. Met with the. Excuse me, we met with the owner of 68 Main Street regarding replacement windows around the entire property. In our discussion, it was determined that while the windows would have. Would appropriate and allowable on these. Would be, I guess, appropriate and allowable on the side of the rear facades compromise. Of ladder additions to the historic volume, we requested that the homeowner make a greater attempt at restoring the windows on the primary facade facing Main Street to their original condition. We will continue that conversation in June, lastly, we continued our discussion with trustee Woods regarding the fence at 8 Furnace Street. For our monthly meeting on June 9th, we received an application from 17 Marion Avenue regarding a new garage and adjustments to previously approved fence. Board work. Projects and notes, Putnam County GIS Office has completed all of our requested updates to the map, we will schedule a workshop with the trustees to present the changes after our June monthly meeting. Thank you, Sean. Did Bob make it on?
Yes.
Hey, Davy, I'm here, I'm sorry, yep, I'm here.
On a prayer, are you? Yep.
Thanks, okay, you ready for my report?
We certainly are.
Okay, very good, as you know, the town hall renovation is working on the punch list still. We're back in there as, for our second meeting for the last two months, unfortunately, not many people showed up at our last board meeting, but it was in person. This is a little strange thing, but we did receive a $10,000 credit back from one of our electrical contractors, very unusual, we'll, we'll accept the $10,000 back. So it's, we appreciate that for him being very honest and, and making the effort to give us the money back. We accepted a retirement from Karen Viers Adama from Rec Department, she worked there for 29 years. I'd like to thank her for her many years of dedication to the, in the services for, to the town of Phillips Town, she'll be greatly missed, you know, she's been down there a long time. But if you ever answer a call down there, she's the person that answers the phone. We passed a few resolutions regarding highway garage, a negative declaration under secret, town exemption for local zoning and advertising to demo of the existing garage. Originally, we were gonna demo the, the existing garage ourselves, but. The crew's pretty busy and depending on how the bids come in, we'll determine if we're gonna do it ourselves or not, but we'd like to try to get it out. That forbid, so someone else can work on that away, also, we had opening bids today for new garage. I really don't know the outcome as a particular time, because I couldn't make that meeting this afternoon. But from what I understand, they're, they're a little bit over our budget, but we're gonna figure out how we're gonna move forward with that. Again, we didn't award it to anybody at this particular time, but we did get all the bids back in. We were also gonna be hiring a construction management project manager for this, for this, we, we tried the town hall without that and to be quite honest, it was a. Lot of work that fell on the town board and also too, we felt that we have a project manager, they could manage it better and also hopefully probably keep some of the costs down is what we're gonna do. With that. We passed a resolution, started pollinating and guarding at the town hall. We're gonna start slow, we did get a call to do the whole front of the town hall, but it was just out of our budget, so we're gonna start. A very small section and probably hopefully grow that over at the, over the years as they come. We installed new gravel around Quarry Pond up there, we had a few requests last month about the gravel that we had around there was getting kind of old and not. And it was, I'm gonna dilapidate it, so we put new gravel and, so if everyone takes a walk up there around with the new. The pond, you'll see new gravel, so it looks pretty good. As I've been saying over the last several months, the Garrison Golf Course and Shake Search Festival is moving forward with the planning board. It's gonna be many, many months before we come to a resolution for this. Also, the Desmond Fish Library was going to install a solar ribbon in a Discovery Trail. They're moving forward with the Discovery Trail, but they did eliminate the solar panels and most likely that will be approved next month. The solely, most of the boards are meeting in public. In the, in the town hall, a new space, but the planning board has decided they'd rather meet via Zoom through June. The coronavirus update, we had a meeting down there last week with Sean Patrick Maloney and many people of the county. They indicated at the end of this month, they will no longer be doing the pods down there. And Drug World representative was there as well, he's saying later this month, anybody with the, you know, can walk into the Drug World later this month with no appointment. And get the vaccine of their choice, they're gonna have to, so if someone wants a Moderna, they can get that, Pfizer, they can get that. And any other, J and J, they can get that as well, so. That's a good thing, that means things are starting to come back, as everyone indicated, we're hoping to get the state back to 75% vaccinated, I guess when that comes, according to Governor Como. Things should be open up at full speed. We're scheduling a workshop with the Nelsonville Board and, and Colespring Board. Have you guys seen that email? Did you guys, were you able to make one of those two dates?
Later on in our.
Okay, whatever it is, we'll, you know, hopefully discuss the new, discuss the marijuana legislation. And we're still looking for someone who's interested. And we're still looking for someone who's interested in joining the Planning Board of Assessment Review. Thank you for your time.
Hey, Bob?
Yes.
It's Larry Burke, I know you're going through a lot of, of new quirks with the new building, we've been getting a couple of false alarms up there. We had a, a panic alarm that went off when I responded, there's been a elevator alarm that's gone off and a couple of hang up on nine one ones. So when you're, whoever is still doing your punch list up there, if they can look into some of that, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Okay, Larry, thanks, yeah, I, I did understand, we did get a call one day last week from the alarm, so definitely thanks for bringing up tomorrow, I only knew about the one, so thanks for bringing it to my attention, I'll try to stop by there tomorrow and talk to the group. Thank you.
Bob, since you just got those bids, and I was wondering how the, since construction materials are up about two hundred to two, three hundred percent. I, I would imagine it's pretty hard to get a bid out or get people to bid on stuff.
Well, from what, like I said, I wasn't there for the bid opening, from what I understand, Dave, we got quite a few bids. Unfortunately, we did the town hall, we only got like two or three. From what I understand, we got a bunch, we got all like almost ten bidders on this project. And I don't know the final number, so I hate to say what, what the numbers were, but I heard they range from three million all the way up to six million dollars. But again, don't quote me for that, that's not a, you know, that's what I was told from a quick conversation I had with somebody else down the town board later, late this afternoon. Yeah, I'm sure, like you said, the price of materials way up, so exactly, you know, no one anticipated that.
Absolutely not.
I know, but yeah, I, I know, but right now, we're kind of a predicament, I mean, we're started dismantling some pieces of that building, we rented two spaces down in Nelsonville. So at this particular time, I think we gotta move forward, but hey, if it's completely out of budget, if we can't do it, then I think we'll have to come up with another solution.
Okay, well, good luck with that. Curious, every time I go in Home Depot and see the plywood's up to like over eighty dollars a sheet for half an inch.
Wow.
I would, how people even, or people that had bids, how they're working with those and, and I don't know. It's a tough, tough year to be building, I think.
I, I, I agree, and I heard, I heard steel's just as bad, you know, the steel I heard is like crazy.
And hard to get stuff.
And hard to get, yes, exactly right.
All right, well, thanks, Bob.
All right, Dave, and everybody else.
Take care, Bob, thank you.
Okay, Fire Company?
Okay, so there were thirteen calls for May, two EMS assists, five activated fire alarms. One possible propane leak, one mutual aid garrison fire, one mountain rescue on Breakneck. And the company was able to use its new Polaris Ranger for that. And with the new Ranger, they have the capacity to put the person who is hurt on a vehicle and drive them down rather than carrying them down. So that's a, a large improvement from where they were last summer. One carbon monoxide alarm and two elevator rescues at Metro North. I cast on to Mayor Miranda that Chief Marigan would like to speak with someone at Metro North regarding the elevator, and this is the new elevator, they've had two alarms, they said they sort of come in fits and starts, and the problem seems quickly resolved when they, there's an exterior button they press and it resolves, but they still take the elevator out of service and so that Metro North is aware and is sure to follow up, but he wonders if it isn't a simple electrical problem, because it's not, it doesn't seem to be happening in response to outages as it was before, so I know that you're in talks, Mayor Randy, with Metro North frequently. I don't know if you have the contact with that sort of issue, and would like to pass that on to Chief Marigan.
I'll, I'll follow up tomorrow, it's on my list.
We're still on automatic mutual aid with North Highlands, so thank you to North Highlands from six AM to six PM. Unfortunately, the ice cream fundraiser over Memorial Day was a bust, as was everything in the rain. And I think that Mayor Randy, you had meetings with Padala on the the boiler, that's moving forward too.
Yeah, it was actually not with Padala, it was someone else on HVACA, but I have to reach out to to Jimmy Padala tomorrow about the heater, the hot water heater.
Hot water heater, right?
That, and I also talked to a painter about painting the side of the building that's facing the old Homestead Building. And the old Homestead Building, I met with Matt Steltz, and we went and looked at it. And maybe one of the causes of the so-called mold was this awning. It was pretty much drained right into the building. They would take it down and they did. They removed that, so thank you to them, and so now I think the next step is to seal that wall. So let's try to get a quote on that and move that forward.
Excellent, that's all I have for them.
Hey, thank you, next Tree Advisory. Is Jen on or not?
Is not.
Okay, Tree Advisory Board did not hold a regular meeting in May, our next meeting will be June twenty-third at seven PM. Updates for the month of May included Main Street Trees, the Highway Department completed the work of widening one empty tree pit in front of one oh one Main Street in preparation for a future tree planting, thank you to Mr. Downey and crew for their help. TAB volunteers are using a loaned one hundred gallon watering bladder to periodically water new planted trees throughout the village during the unseasonable, seasonable heat wave this spring. Contact work, or contract work, two mature willows in Mayor's Park with significant dead wood have been professionally pruned and their canopy reduced to improve their structural, their structure and reduce the risk of breakage and to extend their life. Thank you to Ruth Ann and members of the Rec Commission for collaborating and finding funds for this needed work. The arborist and a crew did a great job preserving these trees. And finally, a declining maple near sixty-five Chestnut Street, which was concerning adjacent residents was evaluated by an arborist and was recommended for immediate removal due to the stage of its decline and visible root rot. The removal work was completed before the end of May. Respectfully, Jennifer Zwore. Thank you. Is the final, is the Chamber of Commerce?
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me okay? So the Chamber held our monthly virtual meeting in May with a presentation on the New York Health Act with guest speaker Dick Godfrey, Chair of the Assembly Committee on Health, who provided a legislative update and answered questions. The meeting was attended by trustee Foley, as well as the Director of Putnam Tourism, Tracy Walsh. And the Director of Putnam EDC, Kathleen Abels were present at the meeting. Jeff Michelson, the Chamber's Advocacy Chair estimated that Cold Spring Village alone would save approximately three hundred thousand per year in employee health insurance expenses. Should the New York Health Act get passed, the bill has majority support in both New York Assembly and New York Senate. And has about another week to come to the floor or vote before the session is closed for the year. Any municipalities, businesses, organizations, or individuals who'd like to encourage putting the bill to vote this week may add their names to the endorsement at NYHCampaignNETWORLDSLASHENDORS. Our June meeting will be our annual Chamber Awards on Tuesday, June fifteenth from nine thirty AM to ten thirty. This annual celebration is a chance to thank some of the businesses, organizations, and leaders who helped to shape, improve, and provide Phillips Town residents with services that support a high quality of life. This year's scholarship winner will be also announced at that meeting. Officials are invited to join the meeting, and the meeting will be open to the public. Guests can RSVP on the Chamber of Commerce's homepage at ColdSpringNYChamber.com. Here's an update from the Visitor Center, the Visitor Center Information Booth is open, this opened up this past week as well as the Monday of Memorial Day weekend. We had some delays Saturday and Sunday of Memorial Day weekend, we're kinda rained out, so we did not open until Monday. But the bathrooms were cleaned and restocked on Saturday, and the volunteers were there on Monday. Wifi was installed with a box in the utility room of the Visitor Center this past Friday on June fourth. And the volunteers are scheduled to open the booth from eleven AM to five PM, Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays going forward. Whether provided. There are a couple new businesses that opened on Main Street this past week. We'd like to welcome Wild at one thirty-five Main Street, a new house plant shop, and a new chamber member. And Studio Tostego, a ceramic art dealer at forty-nine Main Street. We wish both businesses good luck and in their business launches, and everyone should check them out if you haven't yet. New York State COVID nineteen pandemic, pandemic, Small Business Recovery Grant Program is rolling out a plan to get small businesses who suffered financially during the pandemic back on their feet. The program is being administered by the Empire State Development Court. And to qualify small, for small and macro businesses must be able to show gross receipts between twenty-five thousand and five hundred grand in twenty twenty or twenty nineteen and demonstrate at least a twenty-five percent loss in gross receipts in a year-to-year revenue comparison. As of twelve thirty-one twenty twenty to the same period in twenty nineteen. For-profit independent arts and cultural organizations are also eligible, but there are conditions about having received other relief funds, so they have to read the instructions for applying carefully. Grant amounts of about five thousand to fifty thousand, depending on the size of the business, are available. And applications first date to file is June tenth, twenty twenty-one, tentatively. People can learn more about this program at EST.NY.gov. And that's it for my report tonight.
Thank you. Before we go into our next section, do you, is everyone okay about going back to the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll go back to number four with the resolution, I'll make a motion, will I can, will somebody else make the motion?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the authorization to renew a cable franchise agreement with Cable Vision of Woffenhurst Falls to operate a cable system in the village of Cold Spring.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor? We, we might have jumped out of, out of order here, we never did close the public hearing. Is that right?
That is correct.
Is there anyone on, anyone on who wanted to speak? I didn't, I didn't see anyone.
Yeah, no one is raising their hands.
If not, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing on the franchise agreement with Cable Vision. All in favor? And then we'll redo the resolution, Marie, if you would, thank you.
So I make a motion to approve resolution number thirteen dash twenty twenty-one authorizing the village of Cold Spring to renew a cable franchise agreement with Cable Vision of Woffenhurst Falls, Inc. to operate a cable system in the village of Cold Spring.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
It's roll call, vote.
Sorry.
Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley? Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Phillips Woods?
Yes.
And Mayor Miranda?
Okay, couldn't have mangled that anymore.
John, I'll get you the resolution. I'll get, I'll get you the resolution, I'll talk to you tomorrow morning.
Okay, great.
Talk about the, the details on how you, what you need.
Okay, thank you, Jeff, thank you, Mayor, thank you to the board. Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Next report, water and wastewater?
Evening, yeah, I'm here.
Hey, Matt, how are you?
Hey, not bad, hiding in my basement, sorry, there, no video. So, yeah, this month, the water usage increased slightly to one point six four percent. The reservoirs are a little bit lower than they were at this time last year, but still in very good standing. The bacteriological tests, we had a coliform present but absent free coli at the nineteenth of May. All follow-up samples from the repeat sample site and everything else came back in good standing. Just got the results back for the second set of the PFOA, PFOS, Dioxane, and they came back in good standing as well, so that was good. I've been working with West Tech to revise an refurbishment quote to get the filters refurbished, basically just trying to see what absolutely needs to get done, which would be rehabbing of the exterior and interior metal walls, and then replacing the media and other miscellaneous upgrades in the future. We had two water service line replacements in the month of May, one of fourteen Paulding that we assisted with Sal Padala on that, as we were waiting for the resident to get back from vacation, but a sinkhole had begun to be surfaced on the roadway, so it was called in as emergency and got that repaired. The other one was at fifty-two Morris, which we had the leak last year. But yeah, now that the winter months have decided and the, got the state approval. Bazela Brothers went ahead and replaced that line, installed a new curb box and the village and water and wastewater and Highway Department assisted with road closure and traffic control during the job. We also had a new water service connection, sixty-five Paulding by Unicorn Construction. The dam's emergency action plan is pretty much ready to go, I just need two pieces of information before it gets sent back out to the state regulatory agencies, looking for a village trustee or board member to be part of the development crew, there's a hard copy at the office for review, if anyone would like to take a look at it. The other one is, is if tectonic would remain as the village's engineer in this, or should it be upgraded to the current engineer hired by the village? On the water side, we have the Badger Endpoint upgrade, which definitely does need to get ordered. The current quote for the pricing that we received earlier in the year expires on June thirtieth. So I was gonna reach out to Michelle and see if we can get that ordered, and then proceed with I think you had made a mention of it last month, that we could leave the endpoints in the existing locations and then just swap them out over the timeframe until the CMA technology is discontinued. And then everyone should be up to code and still reading and registering data accordingly. Have no updates on the Catskill DEP project since, looking for the backup water suppliers. Moving on to the wastewater side of things, not really that much, yes.
Can I interrupt? I volunteer, I volunteer for the EAP.
Okay, good, I'll put that in there, and then I can get that over to Jeff, and maybe we can compress it down to a better manageable electronic file for better updating annually.
Okay, on the tectonics. Have they been doing a good job for us?
I haven't had any relations with them since, starting with the village, but it looks like they've been the original supplier of the EAP. I guess they did it inaugurally, and then it's been updated by the village periodically throughout then. So I haven't had any relations with them, I just didn't feel comfortable putting them in there if we were no longer utilizing them.
Dave, I recommend we stay with them.
Well, either that or Matt had, we have talked a bit about engineers and the need for one and dissatisfaction with who we have now. So, Matt, would you, is there a recommendation you'd make that you can work with on this?
For engineering, for dam work, not really, I haven't had too much previous experience with that. So, I mean, I can definitely reach out to the contacts I have and see what their if, what their expertise is, and then we can go from there.
Okay, well, maybe if it's not for this, but I think you should, we should follow up for an engineer, I, I think you needed one for, for other work.
Yeah, there's definitely a couple of things.
So, if you have one, maybe make a recommendation for that, if not for the dams, and we'll stick with the tectonic, we, we have been with them.
Okay, so I'll update the EAP accordingly for now, and then start reaching out to them.
Okay, sounds good. Also, anything else? Yeah, that water leak at the end of Paulding, Paulding in Maine, or just before?
Yeah, that's, that's a valve, and it's gonna, you need to get dug up to either be totally replaced or have the packing done. It just kinda wasn't in the budget for last year when it happened, but yeah, I was speaking to Bazela Brothers who did the repair of fifty-two Paulding and as well as Padala, so I'll be reaching out to them as well to see availability and see if we. and as well as Padala, so I'll be reaching out to them as well to see availability and see if we could do it, get that done and rectified.
Okay, yeah, we need to do that as soon as we can, so.
Right, yep.
Yes, great, thank you.
Matt, when you do, when you do packing, do you mean that the, the pipe is repaired and kept in place with support?
The pack, the packing is just a material that's located in the valve that basically stops the water from leaking outside of the stem coming out of it. It's just kind of like a precautionary measure. So with the existing age of the valves that are in the system, it's probably just needs to be replaced. But if the packing, repacking of the valve wouldn't work, then yes, the valve would need to be replaced, but it would be in service or done live if possible with just throttling down the valves to have minimal water infiltrating into the hole and job area.
Would your preference be to, to replace rather than?
I really, it really, it really all depends on the condition of it when we expose it, but you know, it's digging it first and then seeing what we're left with and what, yeah, what we actually salvage or if it does need to be replaced. So, yeah, I wouldn't know until we actually got down to it.
Open.
Uh, okay, moving on to wastewater. Biological demand and the TSS for the effluent leaving the plant was in really good shape. We had 16,000 gallons of smudge hauled off site in the month of May. The E2 INI inspections are to be rescheduled. I haven't heard any updates from Nelsonville on the private wastewater line on Pearl Street. The blower generated building, I've been playing phone tag with Spectre Sir, who is the original installer of the manufactured building. Still looking at other contractors to finish up that wall. The portable or potable, sorry, borderline leak that's on the grounds there. We were gonna try that and do that in-house with the help of highway department, but the backhoe is still down for repairs, so that might look to get farmed out as well. And that's about it.
It, it looks like our Beaver friends are doing quite a job up there.
Actually, that's pretty much been the same. It has, actually hasn't been too bad with new wood showing up there. It's basically best smaller twigs and stuff that have been needed to get cleared, but other than that, it hasn't really grown significantly in the past like month or two.
Great. Thanks, Matt.
Yep.
Thanks, Matt.
No problem.
Let's see, Building Department.
Charlotte's not here.
No, it's not here, not unusual. Okay, I will read hers quickly. Activity, new building permits, 13. Building permits issued, 14. CEOs issued two. Record searches completed, two. Complaints received, two. Inspections completed, 13. Fire inspections, five. Referrals generated, HDRB, three. None for zoning or planning. Fees and permit fees collected, $1,880. Record search fees collected, $150. Fire inspection fees, $100. For a total of $2,130. Okay, Highway Department, evening Bugs.
Bugs, you're muted.
Okay, I'm back. How's that?
Hi, good.
Hi, everyone. For the month of May, we had 48.5 tons of garbage. We had 19.7 tons of recycling. In the month of May, we removed a downed tree on Main Street. We had two brush collections. We did have one low-level alarm at Lower Main Estuary. We repurposed the police department lockers into a propane storage locker to meet OSHA requirements. We swapped a 500-gallon water container for five free brush disposals at Waste Hook Sand and Gravel. We removed a four-by-four section of sidewalk to enlarge a tree pit for TAB. We poured 20-foot of curb on Marcus Street and cleaned the debris off of Main Street. For Rec Department, we repaired broken water lines, installed new supports and tightened all the picnic tables, installed locks on the toilet paper dispensers and installed a new sink to replace the smashed one at Mayor's Park Pavilion. All of this at Mayor's Park Pavilion. We also set up barricades for one wedding. We had the 2011, the 2016 and the 2019 inspected. We replaced a broken window in the backhoe. The 03 garbage truck was at Hatfields for an oil leak repair, a repair to the AC system, and they welded on one of the back steps for us. It was also at Riverview Industries for the body supports that were rotting to be removed and new supports were welded into place and a new ignition switch was installed. Hatfield was on-site to work on multiple hydraulic leaks on the 97 case backhoe and the Bobcat was at Summit Handling Systems to replace the bent main broom beam and replace the broom bearings. For the month of June, we'll be working on crosswalks, paintings, catch basing rebuilds and repairs and trimming limbs.
Hey, thank you.
Bugs, a question?
Sure.
I see that we had a smashed sink in Mayor's Park. Um, how often does that happen in the course of a season?
Um, something breaks. This was a first for me. Um, it was during a baseball game. I can't remember if it was modified or high school. The kid who broke the sink went to his coach. He was from the other team. He went to his coach and told him, I just have to reach out to Tim Walsh up at the school. And from what I understand, the, the team that the kid represented will be paying for it.
Okay, I feel a lot better. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good for him. He should be congratulated. Thank you.
That's what I thought.
Okay, uh, wing along. Thanks, Bugs.
Thank you, folks.
Hi.
Next, we have the Village Court, unless I'm missing something. Village Court, we have fines, forfeited bales and civil penalties at $1,575, parking tickets, $2,075. Civil fees, 140. Mandatory state surcharge, $1,050. Total of $4,840. Let's see. We gotta scroll back up here. There is a request for the annual justice court audit. I gotta scroll back down. Pursuant to Uniform Justice Court Action Section 2019-A, it is duty of every justice to present his records to Docket at least one a year to the auditing board of the village of town, which shall examine said records and docket or cause same to be examined and enter into minutes of, of its proceedings, the fact that they have been duly examined. Consistent with Section 2019-A, the Uniform Justice Court Act, I hereby advise that the court's records and documents are available to be presented for such examination. I look forward to working with you to schedule such examination in an exped, expeditious manner. Is my understanding that OCS's internal audit service unit will be corresponding with you as well in the very near future in this regard. Subsequent to the audit or examination, please forward to the IAS unit the audit report as well as the board's resolution noting that the record have been duly examined and that the fines therein collected have been turned over to the proper officials of the village as required by law. Such materials may be mailed to the, to the following. And there's a list of who they should be mailed to. So I believe, Marie, you were on the audit committee on this?
Sorry, Kathleen and I did the audit for 2019 to 2020. So a question to Jeff, the materials were turned over to Kathy and to Jeff. So for that audit, I think that the last paragraph has to be addressed. Jeff, can you take that on? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can move ahead with that then?
Well, so we completed, we completed the 2019 to 2020. What Tom is asking for is the 2020 to 2021 audit.
Last year, there were, due to COVID, there was no audit, so we're doing two this year to catch up.
Yep.
Okay.
I'd be happy to do that again with you, Marie. Do you want to?
Are you willing to take that on or do you have time?
Yeah, I can do that.
Just let me know what works for you.
And can you make a range?
Yeah, I'll work with Tom and Kathy and Kathleen.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, next report, mayor and board of trustees. Tweeps, do you have anything?
I do not have anything to report.
Trustee Foley?
I'm sure. I'll just elaborate a little on what Larry reported on Lexipol to just let you know where we are with progress. So there are 159 total chapters. Forty-five of them, in our judgment, apply directly to executive order 203. And we have been through 56 of the overall lot, which includes most of the executive order and a few others. I've uploaded this evening 25 chapters for a shared, to the shared Google Drive. Marie asked to have them in Word documents and I was finally able to get all the markup to travel with out of Lexipol. So they're there whenever you want to look at them, comment on them, think about how you wanna, how you want to handle them as a board. I have another 20, some of which I need to catch up on inputting with, but hopefully now that we've got with Jeff's report with the new internet mail layer, maybe we can actually do the inputting live rather than having to work from paper and then go back later. That would be great. We can streamline that process a bit. And we determined that 11 of those chapters don't apply to Cold Spring and so we'll put together a report of the, the ones that we think can be excluded from the Cold Spring manual for the board to assess. I also wanted to recognize Officer Burke and Sheriff Langley for working diligently with the Commissioner of Social Services and Mental Health. Sheriff Langley has been incredibly supportive with our team, finding ways to, to innovate where dollars are short and resources are few. The, the, the model that, that Larry was talking about in Broome County focuses not only on providing training to officers so that when they do respond to mental health calls, they have skills and support to deescalate and try to divert folks with mental health issues from the justice system. It also focuses on dispatch to make sure that the dispatch callers have the training they need to handle the calls as they come in. So I, I, that's, that's part of the picture in Putnam too, or, or is what would, what we would let, what Putnam County would like to achieve is having dispatchers trained as well as, as officers. And I hope that happens before too long. And then the last comment that I, I wanted to, when Jeff Michelson made the presentation on New York Health with the assembly member who's sponsoring the bill, I forgot to forward it. I didn't think of it until Eliza made her report, but there's a calculator for municipalities and as she said, they calculated $300,000 a year savings, savings for the village and a $20 million savings for the county. Obviously, we, you want to look at how that's calculated. It's coming, it's coming out of the, the assembly offices, that calculator, and that would be just an absolute game changer. It sounds like it's not going to pass the Senate this week, the state senate this week, and it's going to roll into another year, but if that were to go into place, it would just be so helpful to all the small municipalities across New York. So maybe, maybe next year we support a resolution or pass a resolution and support.
So a couple of questions, Kathleen. How would you recommend the board handle the materials on Google from Lexipol? You said it's up to the board. How would you recommend the board deal with that?
Um, I would say first, just have a look through to familiarize yourselves. Most, most of the, the edits are are quite minor. There are a couple of chapters that needed to be, needed more work to be customized. I would say feel, if you feel free to go in and mark up. They're in Word documents now if you have comments. I would, the, the challenge with downloading from Lexipol is that you don't see any of the notes for why policies evolved and changed. I would say as you're reading, if you have any questions and you want to see the, the, the notes from Lexipol, I can download those separately and provide them to you. We've got a, we've got a very busy agenda in the next few weeks. I think one of the questions to think about as you're reviewing is how much, how much review you want to do. I know Dave's getting ready to pull together the stakeholders group. If you want, we, we would need to plan out timing. If you wanted to have changes in the, in the text before the chapters go on to the stakeholders group, I'm, I'm open to whatever. Sorry. I would say have a look first and then let's reconvene and, and talk about what you've, what you've seen in the chapters and, and how you feel about workload. I'm conscious of not overloading while we're trying to get through code update.
Was there a deadline by when? You, you identified some numbers. It sounds as if there are 60 chapters out there now.
We have reviewed, we have reviewed 60. 11 of them, we don't believe, applied. So they don't necessarily need review by this board or any other, the, the term is unpublishing them because they don't apply. So we don't have to review those. I would say if, when, when you, Dave, what are you thinking about for starting the community stakeholders group? I think you said the deadline, you want to make the deadline for applications, the 25th of June?
Yeah, I didn't have any specific date in mind. See what response is.
That was just in the draft for letters, letters of interest. So if you wanted that, if you wanted that stakeholders group to start looking at policies, once it gets rolling into July, I would say let's aim to have, let's aim to have comments on 10 of them. If you'd like, I can, I put them all up so you could see them all and have sort of poke around and get a feel for it. But if you'd like me to, to prioritize, I can do that.
Yeah, just doing my math, it sounds like there are 49 that are applicable. So rather than the five of us go through 49 chapters, helter-skelter, if you could identify the ones that you think are the primary chapters that would focus our energies on just 10, which is better than 49.
Oh, yeah, sure. I wasn't imagining that we, that we would go through them all at once. I just wanted to give you a chance to familiarize because no one else has seen, has seen actually the, the content of, of the chapter. I put them up as sort of a first, sort of get to know the project. I'd be happy to. Larry and I have a work, have a priority work plan that we're working from. So I can, I can break it into folders with, with the, following that priority list. I can, I'll, I'll leave all of the chapters up so they're there if you want to go in and out. But I'll break it into a prioritized first 10. And maybe Larry, when we, after we meet with Lexipol on Monday, oh, actually, we have the Haldane Safety Committee at 3:15. So maybe we can get together a little before the Lexipol session and, and pull out the top 10.
Sure.
Okay. We'll work, but we'll take from that first priority chunk.
Okay, relative to the $300,000 that was identified, as you pointed out, the $300,000 comes out to be the amount of money that the village pays to the, our insurance carrier, our health insurance carrier. It does not take into account the amount of money that is reimbursed by the employees and the retirees to the village. It's also not clear to me, and, and that number, the 300,000 is for full-time employees, retirees and surviving spouses of retirees. So there's, there's a number that comes off of that. What's not clear to me relative to the Health Act is how retirees will be retiree contribution, sorry, retiree, as I understand the law, the proposed new law, 80% of the costs of healthcare will be borne through through taxation, personal, a personal taxation. Sorry, taxation based upon a person's AGI. It's, it's not clear how in the legislation, a, a village or, or who is the taxing agent. Is it New York State that's a taxing agent? Is it New York State that's a taxing agent?
Yes, that, that was not clear to me from the presentation and I haven't spent a lot of time yet studying with New York, the New York Health Act, so I don't have the answer to that. But I would say that the Assembly Member's Office, I can't pull his name right now out of my brain, Dick.
Was it Gottfried?
Gottfried.
Scott Free, thank you. Was very willing to talk with individual municipalities and provide information. It seems, it seems worth being in touch to understand more.
Although at this point, it's not going to make it through the.
It's not going to make it through this Assembly session, or sorry, this Senate session. It's, it rolls into another, which rolls into another year. There's, there's no urgency on it.
Right, that was my point.
Yeah, no urgency, just something to be hopeful about if it does go through. I'm sorry.
The other thing I didn't understand, and you probably don't either, is how the, how the taxation on the employees, sorry. How, so 80% must be paid for from income tax, AGI on the participants. 20% must be paid for by the participants themselves. So what, what's happening is the onus is coming off of the village and being put onto the, the employees, full-time employees, retirees and surviving spouses of, of retirees. And they would end up with health plan that is different than what they currently have, which, which may not be as robust as their current health plan.
Can I just jump in?
Yeah.
Um, sorry, yeah, from, I listened to the, to the presentation. From what I understood, and I could be wrong with it, is that the employers are responsible to pay 80% of the tax for this, for this benefit. So somehow or other, you, we're not going to pay for medical insurance as we know it now, but we're going to pay for 80% of what the employees are responsible to pay. So however, however, that much comes up too, because there's no numbers out there yet. So, so we may not pay $300,000, but we may end up paying 100 or 200,000, depending on what our employees responsibility is. And as Marie said, we don't know how we're going to be able to get that number from the retirees.
Yeah, right, right.
So as we say.
Or even from employees, right? It's the AGI, not their salaries.
It's the AGI, yeah, it's, it's.
It's a larger number than just.
Not being a healthcare expert, I can't specifically answer your questions, Marie. But the, you know, the, the, the price optimization seems to come in the single payer. And it seems also that the appeal is being able to more consistently offer optical dental health across the board. But you're right, the retire, the retirement, the retirement element is not clear to me either. The retirees element.
Yeah.
Hey. Conversation about something not going to happen apparently.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Someone will. Anything, Fran?
No, I don't have anything, Dave. Thank you.
Marie?
Nothing.
Okay. I do have, there is the ad for the stakeholders group. I had Jeff put that in this week. Jeff, I have to get you the description to put on our website of duties, which I should have done already. Fran, you said you had, you were going to make changes to the.
I, I sent you a, an updated version with the correct links, but I will send it to you again.
I guess I saw.
And Dave, there was the acronym in there that needs to be spelled out. There is a reference to CSG and, and that should be spelled out to be Community Stakeholders Group.
And I had a, I sent back a couple of suggestions, very minor via Word back to you, and I added all the links as well. So they're collected in one place. The, the one, the one thing that stuck out to me just as a question was, we, we had originally talked about bi-weekly meetings. And we're leaving that at the discretion of the, of the chapter, but I'm sorry, of the, of the committee. But it seems like that element. The way, the way it's written right now, it's, it sounds as if there are more constant meetings than there will be. I, I wrote it out, I wrote out an, an alternative in what I sent back to you. Thank you for doing it.
All I have for now. Next, we go to discussion of marijuana regulations, the Taxation Act. Fran wasn't here last meeting, asked the table, that wasn't done. And now we have a request from Phillips Town for a joint workshop, which will be July 14th at the earliest, unless they change that, which puts us into a crunch. So I'd like to go around with the board and get your feelings on this. Tweeps, if you could start us off, where, where are you at with the regulations and, and whether you would like to, whether you'd like to see this go to a permissive referendum or not, or, or how, how would you like to work with this?
Um, well, first to the issue of meeting. I think, I think that's a great idea to do, to do a workshop with Phillips Town. I, I think hearing how other folks are looking at this would be helpful for us. And obviously, you know, our communities are inextricable at this point. So, you know, what happens, what happens for one will have effects for us. So I think we should definitely have a conversation there. As far as the actual technical process of moving forward, again, I think we should have some conversation with the community. I think the community should be able to look at the elements of the proposed, not the proposed legislation, but the legislation. We should have a conversation about what, what we think is, but that's going to mean for us here in order to understand better how we should move forward. So I would be open and, and interested in having some sort of community input on, on the legislation.
Any personal feelings on whether to have or not to have?
You know, uh, I don't yet have a sense of, of where I stand on it, to be perfectly honest. I think that there's a positive potential. But I think that it's something that would need to be, you know, perhaps regulated even more in ways that represent our community past what's already in the, in the legislation. But I am not yet ready to say one way or the other, how I feel. I'd like to hear what other people feel about it first.
And as far as a referendum, you have no feelings on that either, whether we should have one or not?
I don't know enough about the process, other than the legalese of what I saw, the purpose of it was. No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Kathleen?
So you're asking first about the, the town board and then you're asking about the, the broader referendum question?
Yeah, I guess the town board, whether that should be, or, and then also your feelings on the referendum and.
Okay, so the two dates that the town sent, the one is just days before a deadline. If we were needing to send anything into the Board of Elections regarding a referendum, so it would have to be the 14th, right?
Let me jump in. I spoke to Tara late this afternoon and she spoke with Richard. So the 20, the 28th is off the table as they recognize that it's, it's too late.
Yeah, okay. Okay, and as the referendum, I agree that I would like to hear from the public. I think that providing the information that we can on the village website and then having a listening session or two would be a good thing. I am inclined myself to, to let the public decide via referendum, to let the voters decide via referendum.
Okay. Fran?
And you first, um, okay, um, while I appreciate Phillips Town reaching out to us and I appreciate them wanting to meet with us and with Nelsonville. I think the bulk of anything that's going to happen in this regard is going to happen within this village. And so I think we, we need to get our heads around this. And I understand what both Tweeps and Kathleen are saying about listening to what the, what the residents have to say. However, isn't that what a referendum is all about? So if we decide to put something on the ballot, the residents, all of them, other than 20 or 30 people who are going to come to a meeting or Zoom or whatever, all of them have a chance to, to say what they want to say. So, you know, I'm for getting a referendum on, I'm not necessarily for having a listening session because I believe that that's what the referendum is going to do. So from what I understand, if we do nothing, we're stuck with, with the law, the way the governor has written it, and we have no option to change. If we do a referendum, it can go two ways. If the, if the residents of the village vote that they want to stay with the governor and legalize everything that's going on, then we're done. If they say no, and we want to make it illegal to, to sell anything in the village or to have like a room where people can gather and enjoy marijuana. If they say no, then that can be changed at any time. So six months down the line, they can change it again, or next year they can change it again. So I'm just for, let's get the referendum on the ballot without having to spend time. Not that I don't love the residences, but we've got a bunch of public hearings coming up. And I think just getting the referendum gives the residents a chance to say what they need to say. And finally, and I think this has got nothing so much to do with the referendum as it has to do with the law in general. I believe the village has an option to make their own laws regarding if you want to have people smoking marijuana in your parks and so on and so forth. And that in general, that's got nothing to do with the, the referendum. And I would be totally against allowing that. I think the park should be, is free from people smoking marijuana, as it is for them drinking alcohol or open bottles or smoking cigarettes. We like to have our fresh air. So that's my thoughts.
Good. Marie?
I agree with Fran is in terms of a joint meeting with Nelsonville and Phillips Town. I, I believe that the village will be the primary location for any, any retail sales or any on-site smoking. So I, I don't see the value in meeting with the town. Relative to Fran's comment about smoking, Fran, I'm a smoker. I want to smoke.
But I just don't want to smell it.
Okay, I, I'll see what I can do about that.
Okay.
And in terms of personal preference, I think, I think the village, village should permit retail sales. I don't think the village should permit onsite, let me call them smoking, smoking dens or whatever. The other factors that are in the law about gardening and commercial, commercial farms and whatnot, that's not up to us, that's not part of what a referendum would do. But I do think that a referendum would provide the most broad feedback that we could get. So I, although I'm personally in favor of sales, I understand and, and respect the, the, the need for, or the potential for a referendum.
Okay, thank you. I, I would, I would agree with, I think that each municipality needs to, needs to address this on their own. And so I, I also don't see the need to have a meeting, a joint meeting. I also think we should have this, just, I, I believe we should have it on as a referendum and have it on the ballot. I think that's the best way to see what people really, really would like. And it's the time when people are going to vote. And it'll be a busy, a busy election year this year. So I'm sure it'll be, you know, probably the most we've seen in a while. And I think, Joe, before that though, if we decide to go that way, which it sounds like we, there's three right now that would like to go that way. I, I think that we just need to have an information blitz. I think people should really know what's in the law and what's being allowed. I think they should understand that it's just not a free for all, or it's not like you're walking into the gas station and buying marijuana. These things are highly restricted. And so I, I think that all the information needs to be out there for people to see. And how we get it out there could be discussed, but I, I think that's the way to go. I think just really as much information that we can get to everyone as soon as we can get it to them on the law and make this clear as possible. And then I believe we should, we should, you know, put it on the ballot and do what's needed as far as that goes.
You know, Dave, I have a question for you. It might be a, it might be a question for NICOM. Is there, uh, was not clear to me from the document they provided, but I wonder if towns can take a regional approach to, to, to zoning where the uses are allowable? So for example, one, you know, designating a part, a part of a town, meaning Phillips Town, a part of a town where a dispensary can be sort of like a, a prefer, a preferred zone where that, where the dispensary can be. If you can, if you can work with multiple municipalities in cooperation. I think maybe that's some of what, is that what you were trying to, through, through you, Mayor? I, I'm wondering what the town was trying to achieve and asking us to meet.
I, I don't know what they're, it's the first I.
We just figured it'd get all, you know, all municipalities together and see what we can. To be quite honest, we as a town board haven't discussed it at all at this particular point. We, you know, briefly discussed here and there, and they thought it would be like a good idea to get, you know, everybody involved and see what your thoughts are. You know, if you don't want to attend, that, I understand that, that's fine, if you, you know, but that's it. That's what we're trying to do, to, to, we can all come up together with.
So the way, the way the law is written, the town cannot enforce a blanket law for all of the town. If there is a village within the town, the village can dictate what can or cannot occur in the village. The town can dictate what can occur in the town outside of the villages that are within the town.
Yep, that, that's correct, just the way everything else is. You're 100% correct on that. I think you just wanted to get everyone's input, see what we, see what your thoughts are. Again, it was my understanding, you could opt out the first year, right? And do nothing, and then you can come back the next year and do a referendum. But I'm 100% sure about that. That's, you know, I didn't really read a lot about it. That's why someone mentioned it to me. I don't know if that true that is.
You have one.
Yeah, I don't think you could, I think if you want to opt out, you have to have a referendum or you have to have, have something.
Although it would be different for Nelsonville because their election cycle is still in March, right? Their, their next opportunity for a referendum would be March rather than November.
I, I don't know, Kathleen, I'm, I'm not disagreeing with you. But as I read it, although their, their village election is in March, I think they have to take a position prior to December 31st. So they, they may have to be on the general ballot for the, for the first time in November of this year. If they, if they want a permissive referendum.
Or they may do petition process. Yeah, well, at any rate, Nelsonville is Nelsonville. Yeah, no, I, I agree with the ref, I agree definitely with the referendum. And if we're, if we're, it sounds like three of us feel like any public discussion prior isn't necessary. Two of us think it would be helpful, but it, a compromise, and I think a good thing that Dave's putting forward is making as much information available on the laws via our website and other channels so that the public has access to the same information we have access to.
I, I, I think that actually would be a reasonable compromise. I mean, as long as people have all the information that they need to make the decision, I think that's, that's fair. And if having additional conversations at this point is, is not possible due to the schedule of all the other things that are going on, then you know, I'm not going to, I'm not going to stand in the way. But I do think I would attend a meeting to hear about other people's thoughts on the matter. And if not, then I'm happy to go along with what you think is best.
I mean, we have to decide, you know, I, I think ultimately, I think. I mean, we have to decide, you know, I, I think ultimately, I think everyone would probably agree, should go to the public for a referendum. So informational meetings or whatever, if time allowed, could be had also. Or if not, then only information to be on the website, or any questions could be answered by either us or through NICOM or our attorneys or someone more as most, as familiar with the law as there can be.
Dave?
Yeah?
I just wanted to tell you, I did, I did leave a message with the Controller's Office today. I am concerned about, because the monies are distributed via the county, and we already have such a lack of transparency with the county sharing sales tax and even providing data on what sales taxes do. I'm concerned that there is clear accountability and reporting on this particular tax, because it's the one tax, the one local tax that the state requires Putnam to share with us. So I want to make sure that we understand exactly how much that 75% of the 4% is. That is, we're being, that we're being paid what we should be being paid if we were to go ahead.
I, I agree. So at this point, I, is everyone, or I, I'll make a motion to to add this to the ballot in November, a permissive referendum per the, or do you want, do you want to write up a resolution for this, Jeff, and we'll do this next meeting?
Yeah, it might, yeah, because I want to get with John to make sure that
Right.
Have it correct.
We have to have their, their correct wording on there.
Yeah.
All right, we'll do that then. Okay?
All right, so you got, so you don't want to, you don't need to attend the meeting that we're gonna have then?
No, we won't.
Okay, all right, that's fine.
We, I would like to attend as an individual, just to listen in, if that's, if that's
That's fine, yeah, that's, that's fine, it's a workshop, anyone can attend.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, um, so next, we did number 14 already. Next is setting a date, public hearing on Chapter 126. Marie, do you want to take this one?
Yes, so Chapter 126 is VNT, or Vehicles and Traffic. It is a fairly lengthy chapter. There, there are two sections that this resolution addresses. The first chapter is, the first section of the chapter is 126-1, which adds a definition of a mobile parking meter application. And the rest of the, the change to the chapter is in Chapter 126-41. That was written about four, five years ago now, when the first municipal parking lot came into existence. That chapter section describes a kiosk. It talks about inserting a credit card into the kiosk. It talks about a kiosk, kiosk generating a, a receipt. If we choose to go to a mobile parking meter application, those instructions would have to change. So what you see as 126-41 is changes that section, which has about six statements in it, three of which are unchanged, and the other three are modified to talk about a mobile parking application, which would accept credit cards, debit cards, and other forms of payment. It eliminates the reference to the kiosk. It eliminates a sec, a statement that talks about parking expiration, I forget what the wording is. But, so that's the extent of the changes. There are six sentences, and it's, it's modifying the six sentences to reflect the mobile parking application. So with that background, I think all of you now have that wording in both the, the current Chapter 126-41, the proposed change to 126-41, and the redline version of 126-41. So with all of that as background, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 14-2021, which sets a ti, a date and time for a public hearing on a proposed local law amending sections 120, Chapter 126, Section 1, and 126-41 of the Code of the Village of Old Spring.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Fran.
Any discussion?
So it's a roll call, though?
Hey, Trustee Early?
Yes.
Trustee Foley?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Woods?
Yes.
And Mayor Miranda?
Yes. Okay, and so the date is June 20th? What is the date again? For the
June 22nd, it says 6:30.
Okay. Thought I heard 25.
Bottom, bottom of the first page.
Yeah, got it. Okay, next approval of bills?
Yes, so I make a motion to approve, there are two, two bill groups that will be mentioned tonight. The first is bills that are for fiscal year 2020-2021. These are the remaining bills that Michelle talked about, which are coming in now, but will be paid out of funds from fiscal year 2021. So with that background, I make a motion to approve Batch Number 6037 in the amount of $38,465.63.
Second?
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye. The second back, the second batch of bills are bills that are due in fiscal year 2021 to 2022. So I make a motion to approve Batch Number 6038 in the amount of $12,759.22.
Second?
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You have, you have the second on that, we kind of said at the same time, we can take whoever.
I gave you, Kathleen did the first one, so I gave you the second one.
Great.
Oh, yeah, nice.
Finally, we have a trustee's workshop meeting minutes from 5:13, 10:21. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Hey, I think that wraps it up, except for a public comment. Do we have any public comment?
There are no hands raised?
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, everybody.
Night, all. Good night, all.
Good night, everybody.